Okay, we are live.
All right, welcome to the January 2021 meeting of the Ann Arbor District Library Board. I am Corinne Moore, your Vice Chair and Acting Chair. We have new more members to welcome today. We will do our annual elections, confirm our monthly schedule and go about other regular board business. But let's go ahead and take attendance.
I have taken attendance. We are all present.
All right, at this point, this is normally where we would take the oath of our newly elected members. And because of COVID, they went about obtaining certification and getting sworn in by authorized office holders, and we have received that certification that they have been legally sworn in. And so we welcome Molly Kleinman, Anna Solomon, and Scott Trudeau, and a renewed welcome, of course, to Jamie Vanderbroek. All right, so welcome new board members. Glad to have you here. And let's go ahead and roll right into our annual elections. All right. Do we have any nominations for president?
I'd like to nominate Jim Leha for president.
Do we have a second?
I second.
All right, any discussion? Any other nominations? All right, we will proceed with the roll call vote.
Okay, Trustee Ackman.
Yes.
Trustee Kleinman.
Yes, oh, I'm second now.
Trustee Leha.
Yes, why not?
Trustee Moore.
Yes.
Trustee Solomon.
Yes.
Trustee Trudeau.
Yes.
Trustee Vanderbroek.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, let's move on to the position of Vice President. Do we have any nominations for Vice President?
I'd like to nominate Corinne Moore for Vice President.
Do we have a second?
Seconded. Oh, sorry, Molly, go for it.
All right, Molly or Jamie has seconded that. So any discussion, other nominations? Hearing none, we will move on to a roll call vote.
Okay, Trustee Ackman.
Yes.
Trustee Kleinman.
Yes.
Trustee Leha.
Yes.
Trustee Moore.
Yes.
Trustee Solomon.
Yes.
Trustee Trudeau.
Yes.
Trustee Vanderbroek.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, so we have our Chair and Vice Chair. Any nominations for Treasurer?
I would like to nominate Dharma Ackman as Treasurer.
Do we have a second?
Seconded.
All right, any discussion, other nominees? Hearing none, let's do a roll call vote.
Okay, Trustee Ackman.
Yes.
Trustee Kleinman.
Yes.
Trustee Leha.
Yes.
Trustee Moore.
Yes.
Trustee Solomon.
Yes.
Trustee Trudeau.
Yes.
Trustee Vanderbroek.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, we've got Dharma as Treasurer. And now let's talk about our Secretary. So do we have any nominations for Secretary?
Well, we've done a little shuffle here so far. I used to be Secretary. I would like to nominate. Yeah. I would like to nominate Anna Solomon for Secretary.
All right, do we have a second? Okay, any discussion? Other nominee?
Jamie who seconded? Was it?
It was Jamie, yes.
Got it, thank you.
All right, no other nominees, and let's go forward with the roll call vote.
Okay, Trustee Ackman.
Yes.
Trustee Kleinman.
Yes.
Trustee Leha.
Yes.
Trustee Moore.
Yes.
Trustee Solomon.
Yes.
Yes.
Trustee Vanderbroek.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, this is exciting. We've got a new year to kick off, some new leadership. And we will now move on to the installation of officers where.
It can be done simultaneously if you want to.
Yes, we will all take the oath right now.
Were we all gonna say that in unison together?
Do we repeat after you, Josie, or do we just?
Normally, and this, normally you repeat after the, the person from the court who is doing this. But since, since we don't have that person, I can, I can do it for you, okay?
Great. Wonderful, thank you so much.
So I.
I.
I, Jim Leha.
Hi, Dharma Ackman.
Hi, Anna Solomon.
Okay, do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will abide by the bylaws.
That I will abide by the bylaws.
Rules.
Rules.
And regulations of my office.
And regulations.
Regulations of my office.
As to the best of my ability.
As to the best of my ability.
Well done, thank you. Congratulations, everyone.
Thank you so much for helping us with that. We appreciate it.
Not a problem.
And now is that wonderful time where we relinquish control and allow the new officers to. We would change seats in person, right? But we can at least change roles, and I will allow Jim Leha to leave the meeting going forward, if you will.
Thank you.
Thanks, Corinne. Thanks, everyone. Welcome to all the new folks. You've learned the first and most important part of the bylaws, which is that you, there's no abstaining from voting. So you sometimes have to vote for yourself. All right, so may I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
I seconded that.
Is there any discussion around the agenda tonight? All right, then let's have a roll call vote.
Okay, Trustee Ackman.
Yes.
Trustee Kleinman.
Yes.
Trustee Leha.
Yes.
Trustee Moore.
Yes.
Trustee Solomon.
Yes.
Trustee Trudeau.
Yes.
Trustee Vanderbroek.
Yes.
Agenda approved.
Thank you. Next, moving on to the consent agenda. This is, and Josie, you can help me muddle through when we decided to do this, but we have added, we add certain items to the consent agenda each month. Typically, it's the minutes and dispersments, which helps us to kind of accelerate to the meatier bits of our, our meeting. And this is typically a cluster of items that we, we approve holistically. So if I can please have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Seconded.
Any discussion about the consent agenda?
I'll just say, Jim, I think we, we started using a consent agenda several years ago. It's been a while. And, and if there are any questions about the, what we call the check register or the dispersments, I mean, we're happy to answer. For, for the people who are beginning, they may see things that make no sense, acronyms, things like that. We're happy to expound on what those are and what that means, so.
Thanks, Josie. Any further discussion? We shall take a roll call vote.
Okay, Trustee Ackman.
Yes.
Trustee Kleinman.
Yes.
Trustee Leha.
Yes.
Trustee Moore.
Yes.
Trustee Solomon.
Yes.
Trustee Trudeau.
Yes.
Trustee Vanderbroek.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great, thank you. Do we have any citizens' comments?
I have received one. Let me read that here. Just one minute while I get, we're having a report of the stream not working from our webpage, so let me update that just real quick here. And then I will read the comment. One moment.
Take a little pause while we wait for that.
Okay, that should do it. All right, here comes the comment. Hello, my name is Heidi Pratt, and I'm co-president of the AADL Staff Associates Union. On behalf of co-president Mary Ann Taylor and the rest of our members, I would like to extend a warm welcome to our new board members, Anna Solomon and Scott Trudeau. Happy New Year to everyone on the board, and thank you for the time and consideration you give to our library. Heidi.
Thank you, Heidi.
That is the only comment I've received so far.
Perfect. All right, we'll move on to the financial reports.
All right, so for those new board members, the library contracts with Manor Custerson for financial services and the man at preparation of our financials, working with the auditors, doing our months-to-month check runs, and working with our finance staff and the two, two persons in administrative offices to get monthly financials and then year-end financials out. It falls to me at the meetings to give you the financial report. And I have done, I'll do my best to answer any particular questions you have. And if I'm not sure of an answer based on your question, I will get it to you as soon as I can. But on page 11 of my, my board packet, this is a financial summary for the six months ended December 31st, 2020. It includes a cash notation, tax receipts, a fund balance activity, which includes a graph at the, in the center of the page that shows the fund balance of our general fund from August of 19th forward. So we do this so that we have a picture, a historical picture backward as we move forward with our general fund. What I'd point out at the, on this page down at the bottom in revenue is that total cash receipts through December 31st, 2020 equal $17,753,689. We use accrual accounting. So we receive most of the money early, and then we use accrual to, to dip, to show it in the budgets through the rest of the year. And that's, I wanted to point that out. Also, MIPSers is Michigan Public School Employee Retirement Services is what that acronym is. Accrual accounting? Did I hear something?
Oh, I think, you know, I think, Josie, we're getting a little like reverb. Eli, the, if you have this, it seems like maybe you have the stream on and we're getting it like on a delay.
You still here? Now, I, I'm still, I was troubleshooting. I'm sorry, that was probably me for.
Okay, okay, okay. So MIPSers, the acronym, is pass-through income and expense. Normally, it's been netted, but we, the gap governmental accounting practices have changed, and it requires this money to be reported as income and expense. And you'll see that under personnel in this budget. But because we had to start doing it mid-year, we'll have a budget adjustment for this at the end of the year. Our budget is a line item budget. The board approves the budget as a line item budget at the beginning of the fiscal year, which is in, and you approve the budget in May. So at the end of the year, if we have overages or, or we appear to, we adjust before the end of the year because we must balance the budget by the end of June. And so we show how we, you know, there's a process, a resolution process to do that. We already know we'll have to do that for this MIPSers income. So I'll say that to you now. I said it to the board last month, but I feel like it's worth repeating to people who have joined us in January. On page 12, it shows the expenditures, revenue over and under, and then grants and memorials. What I'd point out is that total cash expended through December 31st, 2020, just that month, is, no, just through that six months, is $8,238,517. Actual cash receipts are 99.50% of the budget, which is 17 million something dollars. And actual cash expended is 46.20, which is not 50%, but we're, we're a little bit more than halfway through the year. And that's not that, that's actually good based on the kind of year we've had. But I wanted to point that out as what the difference in those two things. In grants and memorials, I want, I want to make an explanation. We show this sentence, and we're going to work on this, because as we were doing this and reading it, we were thinking about how new ears would, or eyes would see this. The Friends of the ADL, the Friends of the Library, it says, began the year with a balance of $67,516. And the balance as of November is 30, is $30,257. That is the money in the fund at the library that has been donated to ADL by the Friends. We do not show the Friends of the Library's actual accounting within our budget. And that sentence is misleading, and we realize that. So I want to make sure you understand what that is before we go further in the year. Donations and pledges for the purchase of a digital screen, which will be in the lobatorium downtown, include a quarter of a million dollars from the Ladies Library Association, which is a group that has been in existence since the 1860s. And they fund the library's fine art program and fine art materials collection for many years. And their funds must be spent at the library, by the library, and gifts from them. And they worked with us to come up with this project. We also received an anonymous donation of $150,000 to help offset the costs. Expenses to date are around $412,416. The excess cost to put the screen in, the final cost for lighting and sound, those types of things, will be covered through the Capital Outlay Fund of the ADL, through our, our funds. Below that, you see the titles of all the restricted funds the library has. And these are, the Holtrey Fund is an actual endowment. The Kinniston and the Westerman and the Schaefer and Price are funds acting as endowments. And so that the people who donated the money had an understanding with the library that they would be used, this money would be used for specific things. It's at the direction of the library director. And that, and a couple of them, their balances would not fall below a certain amount. So the library receives funds every year that is not earmarked, and it's people donating directly. And we use those funds to help maintain the balances in some of these accounts. Some of them have been held at the library for decades. And they're still used to fund certain aspects of services at the library. On page 13 is the balance sheet. It shows the balance sheet of our governmental fund layout. So we're governmental fund accounting. We're not nonprofit or business accounting. It's, it's governmental fund accounting. It's, it's fun. I'm gonna smile when I say that, because if I don't smile when I say that, I might cry. It's fun! The balance sheet shows the general fund, the capital fund, which is our capital fund that we use for big capital expenses, restricted grants, which includes the Holtrey, the Kinniston, what we just spoke of, and total, and the total of all of those, and that, and that, that page. On page 14 is the general fund. This is the operating budget for the particular year we're discussing. That's what this is. The December actual, the year-to-date actual, the budget itself, the budget remaining at this point in time. And then we added a column that showed the percent of the budget used in that line. We added that a couple of years ago. So this is the, this is the line item budget. So if you're in, in, curious about what the lines are that are funded by the board, this is it. This is the budget that we show you every April to March and April to the Finance Committee. And it's by law has to be passed by the board in May. District libraries have to pass their budgets in May. They begin July 1. Then on page 15 is the statement of revenue and expenditures for the governmental funds. It's, it's just a broadened-out graph of all of the funds, the general, the capital, the restricted, and the total. And so that is the financial report. I will take questions if anyone has questions. Do the best I can about pension.
I'd like to ask a question.
Okay.
Um.
Madam Treasurer.
We've gone over before and not, but if so, I've forgotten it. I noticed that on page 14, where it talks about interest income, and it says year-to-date, we have 208%.
Yeah.
It just seems very, it stands out. So can you say, yeah?
It's great. So our investment, we invest money. The Bank of Ann Arbor has some money, some of our money that are their investment. Staff, you invest for us. And then Old National has, we invest through Old National, a couple million dollars. And then that, and they invest that money, and obviously, it's earning. Okay. It's investments. And I'll point out too, I, I, you know, I'm not, I never assume what people know. Because this is governmental tax money, it cannot be invested on stocks. So these are bonds primarily and with, that are offered by school districts, cities, counties, or usually for big projects, construction projects. So that's generally what these are.
Josie, can I jump in and add one thing there? The budget is very small for interest, because we've had some years where it did not deliver as much as was expected. So we've tended to budget very low for interest, because it's a lot easier if we get more interest than expected than if we have a shortfall because interest didn't hit the targets.
Right. And this year, it wasn't at all clear what would be going on with budgets when we pass this budget in May. Yes.
I have a follow-up question. Where does that interest, so in a year like this one where it's much more than we expect, where does that go? Does it all go back into the endowment, or does it?
It's in the, it's in the investment funds, yes. And the Finance Committee meets with the investment staff from each of those little banks every year and talks about how that money is performing, where it is. And if we need money, when we would need to say in order to take that money. But no, this, the interest is used to continue to build the investment portfolio.
And if, if revenue is in excess of expenditures, that is part of the undesigned fund balance starting the next year.
Got it, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you all.
All right, thank you, Josie. That puts us back at Josie.
For the Director's Report.
The Director's Report.
So what this is for new board members, the library board, a couple, several years ago, as part of my annual evaluation, asked for a Director's Report with a certain type of content format. And so what you're about to see is representational of that. And, and we tried to pull the highlights for the time we're in right now to get us started off with this new year upbeat positively. So here we go. Our service update for January. Melcat, which is statewide lending, resumes January 25th. Shelf service resumed yesterday, meaning people could request material. The, the material itself won't be available for, I think it's next week. But people could begin to ask for shelf service. Board games and puzzles were added to the catalog, and so they're going out. And you can see the photograph down below, request games and puzzles now from the ADL. There are new art prints in the catalog. We improved the Wi-Fi in all of our parking lots over the last month. We started the winter game. We've never played a winter game. And so we have started a winter game. We all need, we all need some fun before the fire and, and chocolate and however, whatever your drink of choice might be, and we play the winter game. Summer game shop orders resume. What that means is we had about 2,000 that we had not been able to fulfill when we closed the last closure. So we're picking that back up, and as they are ready, we let people know. And they tell us where they want to pick them up, and they pick them up from a vestibule. Zoom rooms. When we realized that we weren't going to get back open, our rooms at the library, all of our bookable meeting rooms are very popular. And we rec, and we understood that people still wanted to get together. And even though they couldn't physically do it, so we opened up our Zoom account to the public. And we added a fourth room due to demand just recently. We have 138 requests for bookings so far. Many bookings are weekly or even multiple times a week. We have an exercise group, folks who get together to exercise, meeting three times a week. And we have knitters, we have beating groups, we have reading groups. Everything, all the things that we did in person, we're doing through Zoom. And I just wanted you to know that. I mean, the library is not able to do traditionally what it's done in the same way, but it is doing what it's traditionally done. And I think we all should recognize that. We, we were also named again for the 13th year in a row, a five-star library. That is thanks to our incredible patrons and amazing staff for making this possible. It rates, Library Journal, which is a premier journal for the library industry, rates libraries based on the, on usage. And the usage is now physical, the circulation of physical materials, circulation of electronic material, library visits, library program attendance, public internet users, Wi-Fi sessions, and e-retrievals. And this is per capita. It's how this is done. And then you're, you're categorized within your budget. There's a budget range. And so you're, you're measured against libraries within your budget, budget range. And so we are very happy. This was 2018, 19 data. So this doesn't represent the COVID year. It was, so it'll be interesting to see how they do that when they do it for the COVID year. But we're very happy about it, and we wanted to comment on it. Where do we go from here? We are playing Martin Luther King's, Where Do We Go From Here speech on screens and the windows of all of our buildings. And they're on a, it's on a continual loop for the, for the rest of the sweep. Normally, we do something interesting in the vestibules and lobbies of all of our buildings where people can interact with one of Martin Luther King's speeches. And we couldn't do that, so we thought, how can we, how can we acknowledge his legacy, his contribution, his message, and particularly right now? And so this was how folks on staff decided to do it. So I wanted to talk about it tonight. Want to make sure we all knew about this. And, what shall reads and upcoming events. This year, the countywide read, read book is All American Boys by Jason Reynolds and Brendan Keighley. And this is a list of all the activities around this title. This is a countywide, this is all the libraries in the county. Ipsy, Saline, Salem, South Lyon, Northfield, Myland, Dexter, Chelsea, and Ann Arbor. Their staff and communities work together to read dozens of books, winnow it down to a couple, and then have six or seven people, two or so picked from each community, to read and then recommend. And then the one, whichever one comes out on top of that is the selection. We're thrilled that it's All American Boys. And I encourage you to listen to the conversation between Jason Reynolds and Brendan Keighley. It's recorded. We obviously could not do in person, but it's, it's incredible and a powerful story of how these two men met as authors traveling the circuit, became friends, and then wrote a book together, representing the points of view of Rashad and Quinn. Two boys in a community divided horribly by a violent attack on Rashad by a police officer who was loved and trusted by Quinn. And so this is the story and how this plays out in their community. So it's absolutely worth your time. The Saturday Show, the album. And I'm smiling because I have enjoyed the Saturday Show, as have many of you. There, we've had so much good music on the Saturday Show that ADL took nine tracks and produced an album. And it was, it is available for download and streaming. So please, please enjoy. Otto Turtles and Friends. Otto Turtle and Friends, sorry. Writing contests for teens and children are now, they began January 11th for submissions. It runs through March. I would just like to, I'd like to say that the teen writing contest, I think, and Eli's the only person who's gonna remember this now with me, is probably been, has been going on about 25 years, if not a little, if not a little longer.
That's about right, yep.
Yep. And, and it's been 25 years without an interruption. It has remained one of the most popular. It has remained one of the most popular activities we do. We have, um, because of it, the increased size and because we we had drawn such international interests, we have had, we've limited the teen contest this year to Michigan students. And that is a, 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 a good problem to have in terms of getting teenagers to write. And so, uh, I look forward to, uh, finding out at the end of this who wins. And, uh, and also with younger grades, three through five, uh, it's still kind of wide open. It's still taking off. So if you know of a third through fifth grader in your family who isn't a Michigan resident, you could still encourage them to write something for right on. Thirty Days of Clay was an activity that we've been doing in January. Every day is a different activity. It's still not the end of January. So if you would like to be involved in learning how to make sculptures, clay, tiny little sc- clay sculptures, you still have an opportunity. What you see are penguins and bees that some of the folks who participated in this posted pictures online. And so we pulled them so that you could see, um, to see this. I, I'm good. I have to share. I have an old card catalog in my house. When the drawers are empty, it's full of granddaughter's paraphernalia. And one of my, my older granddaughter told me when she left and went home from the, they were here visiting. I had to go look in the card catalog. So I went to look in the card catalog. And it's full of tiny clay insects from molding from the Thirty Days of Clay. So I think, uh, who knows where you're going to find your clay sculptures. Mine are in my card catalog and they're going to stay there until she comes here and changes them and does something else with them. But I just had to share that. So it's fun. Circulating repair toolkits coming soon. We, in a partnership with Common Cycle. We're going to begin to circulate repair kits for, for bicyclists, including basic tools supplies, bike pump. And a pilot kit with more to come later. We do have a repair station. Outside the downtown library on this William Street side of the building. But this is our first opportunity to do this and Common Cycle has been very. And they've been very excited to do it with us. So here we go. I'd like to also acknowledge a long time patron Catherine Dome passed away this month, that ninety nine years and nine months. She had been, um, a patron of the library for the blind and print disabled for many, many years. And when she passed, she left forty five thousand dollars to that service at the ADL. And the staff there said that she was always willing to try out the new technology. And to give them feedback. She was, um, one of those permanently curious people. And a pleasure and a joy to serve. And, um, it's clear she felt that way about them. I'd also like to point out that the outreach team, which is in, which is responsible for this service at ADL. They receive comments and cards and notes on a regular basis from patrons. Who let them know how much the service means to them and how much they appreciate how they're treated by our staff. So I'd just like to comment and make that clear and to thank the staff myself publicly. I know how much, uh, work they, uh, this is, and I know how hard they work and so. But I wanted us all to, um, remember Catherine Dome and her generosity. And this part of the report, the board is always interested in comments made to us. That are not necessarily some that you might see, but, um, social media comments are generally positive. These are, um, and so I will, I'm not going to read them. I will let you look at them and you can, uh, see them. It's talking about wifi access points, the, um, Saturday show. We had, we've gotten a lot about the Saturday show. So we're very happy about that. Then a special one for Allison who does, uh, Storytimes. Someone was wanting Allison to know how much her Storytimes is meant to her, their family. The fact that her format and outline every week is predictable and that younger children can look forward to it and follow along. And it's just perfect for particular developmental age and range. And this parent was very grateful. And then down at the bottom, another person was very happy about the fact that lockers were installed at Westgate. Because even, even with all of the prevention that we're using to keep people safe. She feels safer not coming into a vestibule. And so using the lockers was welcome, uh, at addition to that location. Um, and then we get complaints. And so this, this one is a complaint. And, uh, what I try to do is show you the full complaint and then usually it's my response. We, we, we don't disclose, um, the patron's name generally. When we put the, place these in our comments database, we, we know who it is. We have track of it. But we don't publish that name. So I don't publish it in this, um, report unless the person has made it clear that they want it published. But we always answer, this is something to know, unless it's an anonymous submission. It gets a personal answer. If it's anonymous, we do put it in our comments database. But we do not respond to anonymous comments. So this person was not happy with how, um, our pooling of material, how we're using pods to mitigate, um, COVID trends for, and staff at work has, um, slowed down her, with her list, her ability to get material. It is not possible for us to work in pods, mitigate risk. And do what we used to do, which is get whole items to people within a couple of days of their request, which we were able to do. We will one day do that again, but right now we can't. And below is my response. So. And this one is another one from someone who is letting us know that they were sitting quietly at the end of the year, thinking about what or who has blessed them. And how ADL has done that for them and the variability to get material to read during this COVID year. So very special. And that is my director's report and I'm more than happy to answer questions anyone may have about that.
Thanks so much, Josie. I also just, if people want to offer reflections, comments, now is the time.
I have a question, Josie.
Okay.
I'm curious about other libraries are doing the Zoom room thing, like seems unique to me. And if you are unique. Like I wonder if you're getting like press requests or things like that about it.
Oh, sorry.
Do you, go ahead, Eli.
I was just going to say, we stole the idea from another library. We totally saw a library doing this over the summer and we were like, there's no reason we can't do that. And so I don't remember who it was, but there are a few other libraries that are doing this. We get a lot of questions from campus about the vestibule screen attendance. We get that question a lot.
And, and we, and we also, we also got it from a local high school librarian too. Who's trying to decide how to offer library service to high schoolers when public library, public school buildings are open in the area. So we did, we did get, we did get that one too. I'm sitting here, Eli, trying to remember who we saw using it and I can't, I can't remember either. And that's not.
I think it was a small library, uh, somewhere in Illinois or something like that. But I don't remember where we got the idea.
I, I should, um, confess that the U of M Museum of Art where I work has stolen the attendant idea. And adapted it for our own, um, customer service, uh, checkpoint. Was, it's helped us solve a problem with, um, trying to staff the building when, um, our, our typical student staff just could not be there. So they're able to do it remotely. It's pretty, it's been working out pretty great actually. So we thank you for that idea. I also just wanted to reflect a little bit on what I heard. Uh, we love our five stars. It's nice to get them to, again, and I, it never gets old for me. So congratulations. Um, and, uh, as someone who is, who has really become very committed to table games over the course of the pandemic, it's really exciting to see ADL offer, um, more table games. And, um, I mean, in part because those games are so expensive. And you, you often don't know if you like it until you play it. So it's really, um, it's a great resource. And I, I'm sort of, um, chuckling at the fact that there are forty one people who are in line to have pandemic, um, in their home. Which I played for the first time a few weeks ago and it's a super fun game, but very stressful. And, uh, I also just, um, I appreciate Josie, you're including complaints in your report. And also just like giving us a kind of rounder sense of, um, you know, the point of view that folks have in the community about, you know, what we're doing. And, you know, I just feel, um, compelled to respond to that as well by saying that I, I am, um, we had a great presentation last month about how y'all are handling, uh, the pandemic, especially as things have intensified. And, um, you know, you're, you all are doing extraordinary work to keep, um, service at such a high level in sort of all the dimensions of our, um, operation. And I just kudos for that and that we really appreciate the community hanging in there and you know, understanding that we're delivering, you know, the best service we can given the, the circumstances. And that we're really committed to the staff, the staff having a really, you know, having a safe work context.
Thank you, Jim.
For that.
You know, Jim, one thing that you just said made me realize, I think when people ask me about, I find the hardest to explain is why it takes longer to get something that's on the shelf than sometimes when someone's like in the hold list for something.
Well, when you have a fewer number, when you have a fewer number of people working at a given time. The, the material that's moving through the drop boxes are those items that are on the, are highly requested. Like hot. So we're touching them constantly. The going and pulling off the shelf is not top of the list of things to do. It is as you can. So something can be on the shelf, but not be gotten for weeks. Because we're thousands behind on requests, right?
Yeah.
And that's the short, simple explanation.
I think it's like a lot of people don't like get that, you know, they see it's like, oh, it's on the shelf. So they'll just go walk over and grab it. I don't know what could possibly be done to like make that clearer. Like if there could be like some note in the catalog or something. This, that's like, please note, this might take some time to, to get or it's just a thought. I struggle to explain it to like a friend, you know?
Well, we can look at other ways to, we can look at other ways we can explain it and put it out there. I will say that other complaints, that, that complaint right now is the one from folks who are used to getting things very quickly.
Yeah.
And so we're explaining that to them a, a lot. So.
I don't mean to pressure you to like to do that if you feel like it's inappropriate.
It, it isn't so much inappropriate, Jamie. I'm just having to, we'll just have to think about how. How can you get it to the people?
It's a difficult thing to message because a lot of things are being fulfilled next day. And then people get, they, they place two holds on the same day and one thing comes the next day and another thing comes in six weeks. It's because one of those things came in through the drop box and the other thing, there were ten thousand people in the line ahead of you. You know, so it's a, it, it's a very difficult thing to message expectations on. And we've learned, like, we often get requests for estimated wait times and it's a farce. There's no way for us to give that information in any sort, even before all this. There was no way for us to make a reason because the primary determinant is how long someone keeps something once they've got it. And we're not in control of that.
So we are circulating a lot of material. And we're pleased with our amount, the number. It's over sixty percent of our normal monthly circulation from last year. So that's incredibly good for the situation we're in through the vestibules and lockers. But it does not solve the sit, the weight, um, the, the frustration for the person who's wanting something that's on a shelf downtown and we can't get to it. So. Not yet, but we will. Thank you.
Other comments? Yeah, Molly?
This is a question that wasn't in anything you reported on, but it's something I've been thinking about, um, or wondering about, I guess. So I know a lot of, um, workplaces that have essential workers are like, workers are going through their workplaces to figure out the vax, like their line, the point in line for the vaccine now that Michigan is starting to distribute it. And I'm wondering if that's sort of, if that's reached the library yet, or if they're just going to be working through the health department, like where, is there anything going on, I guess, is the question with.
Not, not as an institution. The, the library staff are not essential workers. And, uh, library service is not essential work. And we, we know that. We, we, from, in terms of COVID. We knowledge that at the very beginning, that, that's not who, that's not, we're not essential that in that way. So library staff will receive vaccinations within the category of availability by age and by their, um, whether or not they're at risk. And that will be a personal decision that they make, whether they're vaccinated or not. We will not be tracking that. We'd have, we cannot mandate that or require it. And so, uh, it's, it's good you asked. We've had staff meetings last week, um, Zoom staff meetings and that came up. And we covered it at all the staff meetings. So.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, we can move on if there isn't, uh, other comment. Um, thank you, Josie. And we're on to Len with our construction projects update.
Good evening, everyone.
Hi, Len.
Hello. So a quick update of what we have right now. We, we, we do have the locker installation complete at both Westgate and Traverwood. We, the billing is not all in yet, but we, we did come in well under budget. So I'm happy to report that. And another completed one, I, I don't remember if I said this in November because I didn't speak in December, but the downtown carpet second floor has been completed. And it's really the flooring. So the, we added some LVT where the public computers were in the vending area. All the shelving's back in place, that, that's completed as well. Youth restrooms, we, we're, we're working on some of the finished heights for, you know, um, paper towel dispensers, toilet heights, that, those types of things. So we can then schedule, uh, the inspections on the rough in plumbing and electrical. So that's getting really close to actually closing those walls up. Um, hope to have that done. Probably before the end of March, the youth bathrooms will be completed. Uh, we have the branch generator project. We have approval for Pittsfield and Mallett's Creek. We actually started the rough in electrical inside the building at Mallett's Creek today. So we're still working through that process and we'll have, we'll have more information to come on that. And then the downtown video wall. We, we, we have the wall or we have the, the screens. We took possession of those. I think Eli mentioned this in December. We had it, we had to take possession of them before January first to, um, so we didn't have to pay the tariff. So we saved about twenty to twenty-five percent on that. So we have, we, yes, it was big. But we have, um, all the hardware for that. We have a kickoff meeting, uh, Monday scheduled. And so that installation's gonna probably start, um, this week and next week. And with the, probably before the next board meeting, we'll have quite a bit of work done, probably some updates and even some slides for everyone to see. Say, anyone have any questions?
Great to hear.
Yeah.
It's nice that you can take advantage of, um, this time, like, you know, in the past of reflecting, we used to spend a lot of time discussing like exactly when the building will be closed, like to try to time it. So that it wasn't overlapping with some important reason why people typically are in one branch or another.
Yeah, we're very, obviously very disappointed that we've been closed for this long. We did have that fall schedule or that fall closure scheduled for what was going to be the cafe and second floor, uh, flooring. So to be able to do a lot of this stuff and, and we really are, we're looking around every building to see what we can do before patrons return. So we don't have to have another planned closure for, you know, for the foreseeable future. So we're really excited. I hope when we open the doors that when the patrons come in, they really do notice the difference. All right.
Perfect. Thanks, Len.
Thank you.
All right. Um, moving on to our next agenda item, which is called. All right, um, moving on to our next agenda item, which is called Black Lives Matter. This is an kind of ongoing discussion around um how AADL has been engaging in anti-racist uh programs, practices, and so forth. And I actually don't know what the item of discussion is for today.
Well, it's it's pretty much been on the agenda for
Yeah.
the better part of the year. And I just wanted to re, you know, repoint out that the 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 County Read book is part of Black Lives Matter's conversation and discussion. There will be this recorded conversation between um the authors. And then there's a staff book, recorded book discussion, and then there's a open public discussion of this all within uh February. Also, um, we had selected the artists, the black artists for the mural uh murals on Library Lane. They're working on them, and they will be installed late March, early April, weather depending. And I don't have the list of names, I think, um, I think in front of me, or I would, I read them off to you. But um we're very pleased about that. Their response when they received word that they were chosen, um, that email came directly to me. And uh it was, it was like the best day in a long time because of their excitement and their enthusiasm over the opportunity and how this is gonna come together. And um I was so, so pleased. I think that what I would say, Jim, about Black Lives Matter being on the agenda is I would like to point out to all of you that while public libraries across the country called out Black Lives Matter movement and the early days after George Floyd's murder, most public libraries in the country have not placed the Black Lives Matter banner on their websites, much less left them up for months. We did, and I'm sorry, that was a little emotion. With all that has happened, and with all that we know, and with all that we're finding out daily, I couldn't be prouder. You can take all thirteen five stars, and it's still not as much pride as I feel in the board of this library over time, being willing and putting that out there and keeping it there. Because some of the most unpleasant and difficult written complaints and verbal complaints that I've ever received in all my twenty-one years in this job have been about our doing that. And I think it's important to say, we are doing it because it needs to be said, and it still needs to be said. So I'm on my soapbox, but I get to be because you asked me why this was on the agenda. And I just wanna say it's on the agenda because it needs to be on the agenda. We want it out there, so thank you.
Yeah, and I um I would advocate for us continuing to keep this a an item of discussion as we move through the certainly the current year and beyond. And uh because, in my opinion, the work of racial justice is ongoing and needs to be foregrounded in everything that we do as an operation, as an institution.
You know, Jim, one thing I was thinking about looking at the agenda and this item on it is that we completed the IDI assessment for the like the board before the turnover, but now we have some new members, so that is like one active thing that we could proceed with. Is, you know, onboarding the new people to have that done.
Yes, could do that.
Yeah, I think it would be great. So for the folks who, I think the only folks who haven't done it would be Scott and Anna, right? Is that right? And um we, as a group, um along with um staff leadership, um did a, did the inter- intercultural uh development um inventory tool, which is something that people encounter over time, I I had actually done it before. And uh it's a tool to sort of um assess your own sort of relationship to um issues around uh identity and um kind of cultural competency. And then we get, we get kind of like a group report around how how we're doing as a as a group, as an institution. And it also comes with an opportunity to um have a kind of debrief session with someone who is who is, who has expertise in this particular tool. I think I found, I I found it really valuable even doing it an um another time. So if that's something that we can offer our new folks, that would be great.
Can do that.
Thanks for that suggestion, Jamie.
Do we need a formal motion for that?
No, I can, I can contact the the people who did this and ask them about having two two more folks do it. And um I'm sure it'll be something we can make happen.
Thank you.
Great. All right, uh, moving on to new business. We have a couple of items. Uh, one is to review our meeting schedule for this year. And so I think it's, you, I think on page seventeen, you can uh find what is being recommended by staff for our board meeting schedule. We typically meet um on the third Monday of the month. This is a matter of um longstanding tradition, but we can also, we are also the masters of our own destiny. So we can certainly change this sequence. And I think it's worth saying that one of the reasons uh Monday was sort of locked in in this way had to do with when we were when we still had buildings we could meet in and we could be together. Our buildings are very, very high-use spaces, and this has been the time that has long been reserved for us to meet in an actual bricks and mortar space and not um not necessarily compete with or have to do with other kinds of um program overlaps. And uh right now, at least for the foreseeable future, we'll be, we'll continue to meet remotely. I say all that as a preface, I don't have any, personally, I have no um, I don't have an interest in changing this. But I do, I do think it's worth discussing because we do have some new board members who have different um commitments. One thing I would advocate for is keeping it in the evening. Since doing it during a workday, I think, is very challenging for most folks that are on on the board. So we've got um comments and so on. First, yeah, let's just discuss.
I just wanted to say, oh, go ahead.
Yes.
Uh, I'll just say Monday evenings work fine for me.
Great. They work fine for me too, so I'm not trying to upset the balance, but I do often notice that it comes into conflict with the city council meeting. And I know quite a few people, self-included, are interested in the things that happen at that meeting. And so while this time works fine, it also would work just fine for me to do it some other night. And so I wonder if it is worth picking a night that doesn't always come into conflict with the city council meeting.
And am I right that if we shift which Monday, we could keep it on Mondays, but it could be a a different Monday that then wouldn't with city council meetings?
I thought they met for sure on the second and fourth always, and they often add. So it's it's not always in conflict with city council, but it often is.
Okay.
So and it all, it always has been, I mean, that's always been a thing. I've had to leave our meeting to go speak at city council and come back to our meeting before.
So if we shift it to the first Monday of the month, um, then we would.
Council meets on the first and third Mondays.
Okay.
They often have court sessions on the other, the other Monday.
Got it.
And the other pro- the problem with moving it too far up in the month is about financials. We need time for our financials to be um finished up and brought to to close out the books for a month. So moving it forward in the month is harder for us.
We could do, Josie, um, we would just have to do like a stopgap month. We might need to do like, if we were to say move the meeting to the first Monday in February, we might need to add a special meeting just to deal with the financials in February or in order to get in sequence, or how would that, is there a way to do it so that?
Well, no, what I'm saying is month to month, it's difficult because your month closes, and we don't get the closing, the closing statements from the banks until that first week generally, right, those first few days of a month. So for us to get the financials, for you to approve, it would be, it's very hard to do that the first week of a month.
Wouldn't it be easier just to say do it on Tuesdays instead of Monday?
Yeah, that's another option.
The fourth Monday.
I was gonna suggest fourth Mondays as a, as an option, if we wanted to keep, keep Mondays, but get off of the council cycle.
Um, I would, that would be fine with me, I I I tend to prefer Mondays to Tuesdays, it just depends on how crispy you want me to be when chair the meeting.
I do think for like, for Jim and I, like, um, I guess I'm kind of making an assumption here, but like, if, like, cultural arts programming and stuff, there's like, not as often stuff on Mondays.
That's true.
Friday are like not good programming days, and everything's always like so I tend to also like Mondays, but I don't know.
Yeah. And I would be, I I would be, I would, I think moving to the fourth Monday would be fine if that, but I also, wait, do you wanna weigh in on that, Josie?
I don't have an objection to that. Eli, you can't see an objection to that, can you?
No, I'd have no concerns about that, that would, that would, uh, it would add some ease to the uh financials.
Yes, it would.
Okay.
And so what what you can do is when you do this, instead of, instead of going down the calendar list, just state it, and then we'll fill in the calendar day.
Terrific, okay. So I'm going to um make a a motion that we meet uh the fourth Monday of each month for this calendar year of twenty twenty-one. That is a motion.
Well, are you supposed to motion as the chair?
I I think I'm allowed to, but I'm not sure, but you might, you could do it, Kareen.
I'm gonna motion on your behalf.
You have to check the bylaws on that, I've never been the chair before.
Uh, yeah, I will, I will make that motion, I don't, I don't think.
Thank you. Can we hear a second, please?
A second.
Great, that was Dharma's second, um, any further discussion?
I think we better change December.
I'm sorry?
Oh, we better change December then, I like just.
That's right.
Well, and you have, you, yes, and so what we can do um is you can say the fourth Mondays, and then often we cancel December anyway.
Sure.
And so um we can accomplish, accommodate, accomplish that that way. Cause I don't think anyone's gonna come on the fourth Monday of December. So uh.
I saw another hand.
Yeah, just to uh, just to be very explicit, like also not including this month because there is a fourth Monday in January. I don't think we need a meeting next week.
No, 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 you're talking from February through um to January, the following January.
So I'm I'm gonna, so.
You can exclude December from your motion if you want to.
I would just say we should, we should schedule it, and then we will deal with it later.
Okay, all right.
Motion modified as such.
I like this, I like that we're not, I don't know, it hasn't been a big deal for me, like I said, I was willing to keep it, but I think it's better if we can still meet easily and not conflicted that. And I just know we're gonna have a flood of public comment and attendees.
Yeah, everyone who would normally be at city council is gonna come over here. Um, all right. All right, any further discussion? We'll take a roll call vote.
Okay, trustee Ackman?
Yes.
Trustee Kleinman?
Yes.
Trustee Leha?
Yes.
Trustee Moore?
Yes.
Trustee Solomon?
Yes.
Trustee Trudeau?
Yes.
Trustee Vanderbrook?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Terrific, um. Let's see, moving on to Budget and Finance Committee, I was not sure that we needed to take a vote on this, Josie, but I, we always get a little tangled in this, I feel like.
Fin- the committee appointments are tho- are to be made by the president, but the board generally um ac- accepts those appointments, put it that way.
All right, well, we've got Dharma on the Budget and Finance Committee.
Yes.
Uh, as the treasurer, leaving two other spaces. And I um, I think one space is good for one of our new board members. And uh Scott just raised his hand, so that's a good, that's a good thing. Um, and then I would like, uh, I would like Jamie, if you're willing to continue, um, I think that would be terrific.
Yeah, totally, I think it's
Okay.
Good for
Great.
exposed to all that.
Fantastic, so um that means that I would appoint Dharma, Scott, and Jamie to the Budget and Finance Committee.
Yay.
And I guess we take a a roll call vote to to approve that.
Do we need a second?
Second.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, this is a murky waters for the bylaws for me always.
Okay, trustee Ackman?
Yes.
Trustee Kleinman?
Yes.
Trustee Leha?
Yes.
Trustee Moore?
Yes.
Trustee Solomon?
Yes.
Trustee Trudeau?
Yes.
Trustee Vanderbrook?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Terrific, um, do we need to do Executive Committee as well?
The Executive Committee is three of four possible persons of your officers, it doesn't have to be a set group, cause it can
We can change it, okay.
The president, the president calls a meeting and determines who of the four can be present, so it's not, it's not voted on by the board.
Terrific, great, all right, um.
Sorry, I have a follow-up question.
Yes.
So does that mean it's not consistent across, it's just any three at any time?
It generally, it it generally is consistent. It's generally the president, vice president, treasurer, because of the work they do. But the bylaws allow the secretary to be that third person in the event that someone can't be there.
Yeah, and and this has to do with um the committee, the committees being uh less than a quorum.
Right.
In order for us to do committee work outside of the public meeting.
That's right.
Um, and uh, we um, I I will just say, I'll just state that my intention, at least for our initial meetings, will be that I'll convene with Kareen and Dharma as the Executive Committee. And then um, you know, in the event that Kareen or Dharma is not available, Anna, then you would join into that meeting as the other executive officer. Um, and I don't know, um. I did wanna for, I'm bringing that up in part because I did wanna also just like talk about um placing that meeting. And I'm wondering if um, is it, is it kosher for us to do that? Could we stay on this call, on the Zoom after we're done with the public meeting to do scheduling for the three members of the Executive Committee?
When this meeting ends, it has to completely close out.
Okay.
And then the three of you can stay on with, and Eli and I'll stay, and then you can talk about when you want to meet.
Okay, great, that would be very helpful.
And I'd also like to assure Anna that Karen Wilson, that Matt, Admin Secretary, and I will work with you to make sure that we, I help you um with the secretary's uh work and position. It's a great way to learn how
Thank you.
thing, everything happens, it's great, so, and we won't let you uh forget something, so.
Thanks, I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Thank you for everyone who is agreed to uh and has now been elected to serve in uh uh executive officer positions and on committees and so forth, um, very much appreciated. Um, we all have to do this work at one point or another, um, we rotate in and out of it, and um it's a great and important work. All right, uh, citizens' comments?
So we have received two comments in the YouTube chat, I am not certain they're from a human, but it is certainly possible, would you like?
Okay. Uh, the one night I'm not following the stream simultaneously, do I want you to read them, Eli?
I wouldn't recommend it, but it's
Okay, then.
Yeah.
They are, those comments are available to the public on the YouTube channel.
That is
So, thank you, um. All right, well, we are, uh, we've had a great first meeting of the year, Happy New Year, everybody. I don't know about you, but I am looking forward to tomorrow for an exciting new uh day in our political landscape, and uh And, uh, I wish you all, um, hope and happiness in 2021. So we are.
Jim, before everybody leaves, let's just say our next meeting is Monday, February 22nd. Fourth Monday of February.
Thank you, Josie.
Make sure that we all know that. Okay.
Fourth Monday.
Yep.
In February. All right. We are adjourned. If I had a gavel.
Everyone.
I would crack it.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Scott. Thank you, Anna. Good to see you. Hi, good night. Good night.